Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the enlarged city school district of Middletown's Board of Education meeting. Our action item only in workshop meeting for August 21st, 2025. A reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance for tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes which are available on the district's website. Vice President Romero.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
We'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know and we'll be happy to accommodate you.
Nos gustaría recordar a todos que los servicios de traducción e interpretación están disponibles durante esta reunión. Si necesitas asistencia, por favor infórmenos y con gusto lo ayudaremos.
At this time, if we could please rise and remove any hats and face the flag as we have our pledge of allegiance led by... At this time, if we could please rise and remove any hats and face the flag as we have our pledge of allegiance led by... Moments of silence, Mr. Perino. That's good news. And now for the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Mr. Perino.
President Estrada. We strive to provide fiscally sound education opportunities in a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners and be competitive, productive members of society. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Roll call, Mrs. Monchery.
Dr. De Jesus.
Here.
Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Rett.
Here.
Ms. Romero.
Yeah.
Ms. Tobiasin.
Yeah.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Pastor Williams.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Monchery. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Don't move.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine, nine zero. All right. I need approval to amend the 2025-26 annual appointments.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perino.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tobiasin. If we can have superintendent Creedon give us perhaps an update on what the amendment is.
Sure, we just made some updates to reflect personnel that are retiring, new personnel that are coming in to take over our annual appointments.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval of the appointment of the Board of Education non-voting student board members.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Pastor Williams, I think seconded by Ms. Rett. And we'll read it, whereas by resolution at the May 21st, 2025 Board of Education meeting, the Board authorized the appointment of one ex-officio student board member. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to appoint two ex-officio student board members, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education hereby appoints Napur Patel and Eden Lugo to serve as the ex-officio student board members for the 2025-26 school year. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Congratulations. So they have tough shoes to fill from Norma Avila from last year, but I'm sure both are going to do great. They overwhelmed our committees in searching for our student reps this year. And they also did an outstanding job in doing interviews with the Board of Education as well. So at this time, we're going to ask both Napur and Eden to head on over towards the podium where our district clerk will give you guys the oath of office so you can officially become members. So head on over. And maybe what we can do, we have Napur first, is that right, Ms. Monchery? Okay, if we can have Mr. and Mrs. Patel and the other family members, you can stand behind her as she takes her oath of office. And afterwards, Mr. What do you want them for pictures?
We're going to wing it right here and then maybe we get everybody in front or over here. We'll decide. Something with a good background.
Sounds good. All yours, Mrs. Monchery.
So repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Napur Patel.
I, Napur Patel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of New York.
And the Constitution of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of non-voting school board member.
Of a non-voting school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And next up, Señor Lugo y familia. They can all go up if they want, if you want the whole family.
Yeah, there's a lot of us.
Come on, Dior.
Come on, Frankie.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Eden Lugo.
I, Eden Lugo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of non-voting school board member.
Of non-voting school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got closer than that.
Hey, Bill. They're going to be sharing the same space every two weeks.
And then one more picture, Kevin, our district clerk with the two students.
Sounds great.
They'll be talking to her a lot.
You don't even realize that this is your new best friend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Families, is there anything else you'd like to say? Do you want to say one? Do you want to be taken if you want to hear it?
All the families, all the families. He's ready. He's ready.
Awesome, thank you. Friends? Don't go too far, we're going to need you quick again. You're getting the whole team here.
There you go. Now you're going to get all, everybody in.
Let everyone get in, here we go.
Yep. That's good.
Don't mess around. All right, everybody.
You're official now, you can sit down. You're official. You guys are official.
So welcome, Ms. Patel and Mr. Lugo. Now I'll have to refer you officially like that, so. We'll move on now to our action items for this evening. Can I have a motion to approve Personnel Memorandum 5A, number one?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need a motion and I should bear with me for one second because there is an item that I will have to abstain on. I need approval for instructional Personnel Memorandum 5B, numbers one through seventeen. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Dr. De Jesus. And Mrs. Monchery, I'm going to be voting in the affirmative on all with the exception of 5B-7. I will have to abstain on that one. My wife's cousin is on that agenda, so I want to make sure there's no appearance of impropriety. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero with the exception of 5B-7, which carries by a vote of eight zero one. I need a motion for non-instructional Personnel Memorandum 5C, numbers one through six. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by, which one? Pastor Williams? All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 6D, numbers one and two. Moved by Dr. De Jesus, seconded by Ms. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. I need approval for Special Services Memorandums 5E, numbers one and two. Moved by Pastor Williams, seconded by Ms. Rett. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Are there any change orders this evening? No change orders. Thank you, Mr. Barth. I need approval to amend the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2025-26 school year. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Pastor Williams. Just to note that the schedule changes in action items only meeting on the schedule. It'll be added for next week, August 28th. It'll be a brief meeting prior to our building tour. We need to approve some additional personnel folks that need to be in store for the new school year. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Before we adjourn, I'd like to give, I'm going to put them on the spot, oh, your question first, Ms. Tobiasin.
Just a clarification on my own part. We get our board packets on Friday. Will that be the same for the two members? Will they get a board packet so they can look over or not?
That's a good question. I don't remember what we did last year. Yeah. So the answer is they don't get it prior to going public, the actual information. Not, no, it's good. It's good to get it clarified. And we'll be going over some more process instruction with both Eden and Napur as we move along. Because in addition, just so the public knows, just to be, you know, this is only our second year of doing this. So what we also want to do is make sure that there's never an appearance of impropriety or anything between board members and school board representatives. So typically, communication between Board of Education and our student reps go through the district clerk and then facilitate it out to the board members. And then the response to the students from the board members outside the general meeting will be the same way. We go through the district clerk and they provide the information back to our student reps. But again, we'll, we'll get to clarify that. So now I'm going to put them on the spot. I didn't tell them I was going to do this ahead of time. So I'm going to ask if each of them wants to give us a couple of minutes. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about why you were interested in becoming a student rep and what hope, what you hope you get out of the, out of being the rep this year.
Okay, well, my name is Napur Patel. As you all know, I am going to be a senior this fall. A little about myself, I am a taekwondo instructor, as you all know from the interview. I'm very passionate in being involved with this school community. I really like being involved with different things. It's like having my own club or being recommended for many ambassadors as well as trying out for a student representative. I just really just like to be involved in the community. I feel like I really am benefited from being involved in the community. And I feel like me and Eden are, we work amazing together. And I feel like we could both make a positive impact within this school community this 25 to 26 school year. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eden Lugo. I am also a senior at Middletown High School. I just want to say I'm very blessed and appreciative for this opportunity and I'm ready to make this school year once I remember. That's all. Thank you.
Awesome job, guys. Looking forward to working with you as I'm sure most, all of our trustees are excited to get your perspective on a lot of the things that we have to decide during the school year. Just a couple of upcoming reminders, our next meeting is a workshop and action item only meeting. That's on September 4th at 2025 at 5:15 in the afternoon. And our next regular meeting where we have public participation will be on September 18th after the opening of school. The rest of the evening will be, the Board of Education will be adjourning into executive session followed by their workshop this evening. We invite both Eden and Napur and their families to head on over to the college and career area for some refreshments and some food. And we want to thank everybody for being here, especially the Patel family and the Lugo family. And congratulations once again. So I need a motion from the Board to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin. Yes, Mr. Pastor Williams. Very good point. Motion to go into executive session with no expectation of coming back into the public session. So moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Pastor Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Have a nice evening, everybody.